Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd just like to say something. Our campus was badly damaged on March 14th by the tornado. A lot of work has been done, but we have a lot more to do. Things are not perfect, things are not pretty, but we can teach and students can learn. And I think that's has remained our focus through this whole entire time. And I'm very proud of that has been our focus. We are going to have our students back on campus for instruction. And we'll have that done by next week on Wednesday. Our high schoolers will be coming back on Wednesday. I just want to say great work and thanks to our administrative team, technology maintenance, first responders, first-site responders, CJ Huff, our resource officers, and anyone that has helped us in any way to get to this point. It's taken a lot of work and a lot of hours to get to this point. And I want to thank everybody for helping us get to that point. I also want to thank our community for their support. We are pirate strong and we will get there. It's still going to take us a lot of time, but we're going to get there. And we're going to need a lot more community support, a lot more parent support, because we've lost some instructional time. And we've got to get back in classes and we've got to buckle down. And our students have got to get back to learning. So thank you all for coming and being a part of this. And I just want to thank everybody that's helped us get to this point and will continue to help us along the way. I need approval of the agenda, please. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose. Our agenda has been approved. Dr. Jones is going to give us an update of what's kind of been happening since we met last week and kind of where we are.
It has been a great week for us. We've accomplished a lot. We are tired, we've worked hard. We're very proud of what we've been able to plan. We brought the primary and the career center students back to campus on Monday. And the elementary students were so excited to be here today. Our middle school students will be back on Friday. And then our big news today is that our high school students will be coming back on campus to be with us on Wednesday. So that brings everyone back to campus, but it doesn't necessarily bring them back to exactly where they were before. We have found learning spaces all over campus for our high school students and staff. It has taken a lot of planning, a lot of effort, a lot of moving. And everyone has just been wonderful and so willing to give up space for kids and for teachers that would give them at least the end of this school year. This is temporary. This is temporary to get us through the next seven, six, seven weeks of school to get us to the end of the school year. As the board president said, we still have a lot of work to do. We had some very significant damage to the high school. We still are not able to access that area just yet. But we're not going to sit and wait for that. We're moving on, we've got a plan, we're going to get our kids back. And we're going to have a really great end of the school year. A lot of people are wondering, what are we going to do? We're wondering the same thing. We have a lot of questions that have not been answered. And we're going to need a lot of engagement from our parents and our community members so that we have input and feedback from you all on what you all think is best as well. So we are going to establish plans to engage our community, to get feedback, to take surveys, to go through that whole process so that everyone is involved in that plan moving forward, long range. We haven't been focused on that just yet. We've been focused on our kids and getting them back. Once they're here, we'll be ready to start that work moving forward. All of the areas that's going to be used by students and staff, those have been tested and they are all negative for asbestos. Some areas in our high school are still being tested. We are still waiting on some results from some of those areas. This testing will determine when and if we can get materials and supplies out of those spaces and move those over into the new learning spaces. But our high school is, we're prepared to go, to get our kids, get started, and do what we can for our kids. We are also just incredibly proud of everyone. And reality set in for us today. And we really started looking at what we've accomplished in this amount of time. We were hit with the tornado. Our campus was hit hard 16 days ago. Our primary students only missed four days of school. Our career center kids only missed four days of school. Our elementary missed six. Our middle schoolers are going to only miss eight. And our high school students are going to miss 11. And their building has significant damage to it. So we are very proud of that. But our recovery from this tornado really has just begun. We have a lot of work to do and that work will take time. And it will take a lot of input, a lot of people leaning in to help everyone make the right decisions for what our students need. We've accomplished a lot. We've got more to do.
We still don't know anything about FEMA. It's our understanding that through our emergency management person that we did meet the thresholds for that. It went to the governor, the governor signed off on it. And now it has to go to the president. So we still do not know anything at all about that possibility. We may find something out by the end of the week, but we do not know anything as of yet about that. We've had our insurance adjusters here on campus looking over things. I think that's gone very well. And we're waiting on windows to come, to get windows back in. We've looked at every area where kids are going to be to make sure there's proper egresses so that if we need to get the kids out, we have a safe way to get them out. Now, there are going to be windows boarded up in classrooms, but I don't think that's going to keep kids from learning. So it's not going to look pretty for a while, but it's going to be the best that we can make it right now. And I'm really proud of where we are right now.
Dr. Jones, I know there's a lot of details to come out, but big picture, will school times change anything next week with the high school students?
There'll be class change times in their schedule, but the start and the end won't change. But the time to allow them to travel in between these spaces will be a larger time span.
And all that will come within this?
From the high school principal. He'll be communicating all that out.
Mr. Kaver, gotcha.
So what kind of chaos will there be on Wednesday when these high schoolers are now coming back to multiple buildings and classrooms they've never been to trying to figure out their schedule and where they're headed?
You know, I think if we've raised the board, we had parking lots drawn up here. We've even got a plan for where they park their cars. There will be a lot of hands on deck, a lot of gathering the kids and the staff together and having those pre-planning meetings to try to have that message going out ahead of time. There's going to be, there's going to be confusion. Kids are going to be anxious. It is spaces that they haven't been in before. So we're going to have to give them a lot of grace, a lot of patience and time to just kind of get resettled into new spaces. Now, our students years ago were used to traveling all over campus to those buildings and spaces. So a lot of our parents, that's the same path they had going from class to class. That'll be new for these students. They've pretty well been centrally in one place. And so travel time will be something different, something they'll have to get used to.
We do have two action items on our agenda tonight. One of those is for a construction project management leader. We've got a lot of construction that needs to be done as far as putting back in windows and things like that. Our first-site people, will they leave us when we get all the kids back on campus?
So right now, though, that company is operating under emergency response. So they are helping us with all the most immediate things that we have on need. But there will be a point where we move over into the, where we start fixing things, but for the long range. So that will need to be put out so that it is, there are other companies that also have an opportunity to do that work with us moving forward. First On Site falls under just that emergency. And we have done work with them in the past. But we'll get to the point where we need to switch over and give other companies the opportunity to do work for us. And so if we could entertain a motion to procure those types of services, then we could switch over to more permanent, long-range fixing what's really damaged.
So when the students come back to school, does that take it away from emergency? Will any first-on-site to be here?
We kind of, we still have the authority to say, to pull that trigger and say, okay, now at this point, we're done. Even when the kids are coming back on campus, we are still doing some work that would be short-term, short-term cleanup.
Does that mean that emergency is going to help classify through the insurance?
Yes.
Because we really don't know when the windows are coming yet, correct?
Some of them, some of the buildings have been ordered. And then some of them, it would probably be in our best interest to get a professional opinion about how to best replace those. As you had said, we've boarded up things. It's safe, it's not pretty. We would appreciate some professional opinions so that it is pretty for the long term. That's important too.
Dr. Jones, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing in my mind two separate things. You know, looking at that right, kind of like a project manager, and then the other maybe more long-term. Does that mean you look at that?
No, I'm looking at it as a project manager and then more of a construction manager, architectural team. You know, you're going to want professional engineers to look at the damage that we have and make assessments on that. A project manager manages that coordination between the insurance and the adjusters and the contractors and all that. But you still have a construction manager and a project manager.
Go through that again.
So you would have a construction manager. It would most likely be an employee of the construction company that you would decide to go with. But then we would still have like a project manager that's going to oversee the insurance process, possibly some of the FEMA work that we may get into. So this is not just building, a brand-new building. We are doing repairs, we're coordinating with insurance companies and a lot of different entities for funding sources to get these repairs done. So you'd have someone that would be oversight for that in the district. And then you'd have a construction manager that would work with whatever company that the board would decide to go with eventually.
So we can't, we can't at this time hire a construction architectural engineer? We just have to wait until we hear what the insurance and everything comes back correct?
No, we could go ahead and start the process. Because when you do, when you enter into the process of choosing someone, it's an RFQ, so it's based on qualifications. So you're going, we have the ability to go ahead and move forward and start interviewing companies who submit bids and kind of start that process. So we aren't wasting time when we find out what the money flow is going to be. We would know what the scope of the project's going to be. And that would also, we need to engage our community and find out what we want to do. At the same time, the insurance is happening. We find out how much money we get to do it. So there's going to be a lot of moving parts that's very different than just a typical construction project. We, it would be in our best interest to have someone coordinating and working through all of that that isn't just an employee of the architectural company or the construction company. It would be in our best interest to also have someone working for us.
That project manager position, you don't have a crystal ball, but is, you envision less than a year, a person would be in place? Any feedback from the consultant that you have from Joplin?
I wouldn't have a timeframe, but we do have some draft RFQs if you all want to take a look at those. Take a moment for that.
And how, what's the, how many days do you have to post these to?
I think we've got some, we've checked back with our legal, MSBA, with our legal advisement, and that's in this lady with here. So the RFQs would be for construction management services and architect and engineering services. So that's the two terms, the two positions. Again, that's construction management services and architect and engineering services.
You would anticipate this being two separate entities, not one company that survives both?
And then on the last page, you can see there's a tentative timeline. This, at this timeline, absolutely could be adjusted. We just kind of wanted to start laying it out to see what that timeline could be for those two. Do you see how they're like separate and side by side? So even though there are two different bid processes that are coming in, we could do them simultaneously. And we didn't have to strictly adhere to this. This would be based on board members' availability. If there's dates that we may need to stay away from for any of you. But this is just kind of to lay it out so you can see the timeframe that would be tentative. These RFQs, if we decide to procure these services, we would advertise these in our local paper.
Well, I am not in favor of the hiring an architect and engineering service to tell us what we need before we decide.
So I think that's also why we are interested in the construction management as well.
Yeah, I have no problem with the construction management. I think we definitely have to have somebody here to take the load off of Dan and take the load off of everybody else that's kind of been trying to make sure we get that done. And to me, that person would be the one that's making sure the windows aren't in, making sure the construction that we need done is done. Dan can do his maintenance then, and he doesn't have to be a part of that. You don't have to be worried about what's not getting done. Craig doesn't have to worry, I mean, it's just, we need, we definitely need a construction project manager here.
And based on the amount of damage that we have to the building, because it could have some structural hurdles for us in repairing it, we do, I would be, I think it's very important that we seek an engineer and an architect for their professional opinions. They aren't going to be able to do anything that we do not approve for them to do or guide them to do. But we need their professional opinion so that the community can make educated decisions about how to move forward. We can't look at the damage on that building and know how it can be fixed. But an engineer can.
So if we issue these RFQs, and we're following the timeline here, and come April 24th, we're going to interview them in a board meeting. And after the interviews and after the updates, because this is another month away, we gain that we don't need one or we're not ready for one, or we are obligated to hire one at that point or to continue on, or can we just say no? We're on pause right now, but we'll keep this in mind.
So if I can hand this to you, this also kind of has tentative dates on the community engagement, so this is also ready simultaneously because we do not have time to waste. So if you see this first community engagement, we're looking at the timeframe of sometime between March 31st and April 7th. But we would start engaging internal and external audiences. Those audiences would include students, faculty and staff, administrators, board members, parents, and community members. We could send out brief surveys with some certain points to get quick feedback. So that's March 31st through April 7th. And then if you see, the submit, putting this in the paper is March 28th. So we would submit the RFQs in the newspaper. And we would have those first community engagements completed before the RFQ deadline. So these dates are running if you set those two documents side by side. The next timeframe would be April 10th through the 30th. And then May 14th, we would have a community engagement report that we could share at a regular Board of Education meeting, that May 14th meeting, to share with the public what we've gained from all these engagement activities with the public. So that all just kind of runs in with the same timeframe as this. I think some people have a fear if we hire an architect, that means we're building a brand-new from the ground up. And that is not the intent. We want to get educated opinions. We want to have professionals come in and look at the damage, give us advisement. And then we want to engage the community, the board, and our staff on what our options are and what we are going to do moving forward.
My concern about this timeline is you're talking about Monday, starting to engage students, faculty, administrators, board, parents, members. But we don't have any opinions from anybody. I mean, we don't have an insurance company saying this building can be repaired or can't be repaired. So what, how can I form an opinion? I have no data. I mean, we need, we got to have some sort of information as to if this building can be repaired or can't be repaired. Here's what, here's the areas that are still usable. We could, I, it's hard for me to form an opinion and do anything without having some background.
I'm just very reluctant to put too much pause on any of this because I really, I'm hoping to get things repaired as soon as possible so that we do not have high school students spread out all over campus. So I appreciate, you know, the reserve and the concern. And I understand it and agree with a lot of it. But I, as I said in the very beginning to our staff, if we do not set a goal, you won't achieve that goal. You may not get there and you may have to make changes. But if you don't shoot to get kids here on a Monday, you will not get kids here on Monday.
So what would this survey ask for?
I don't know, I haven't, we haven't got that chance for that yet in the details. I just wanted to get this in front of you as far as a timeline that we, and wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we, this is our intent, for there to be engagement and opinions and for people to share their thoughts with us so that everyone has input on it. So the decision is not made in an office somewhere and it rolls on out without someone having the opportunity to voice their opinions. And I understand it's hard to know exactly what you would want until we know a little more. And it's going to be, it's going to be a lot like what the last two weeks have been. We have a lot of unknowns, we have a lot of questions. And you get gradually every day, you get little pieces. And we just keep putting one more foot in front of the other. And I really want to be able to have these two RFQs go out at the same time that we're trying to collect that information.
So if we do these RFQs and then we hear these different companies that interview them, are we obligated to pick one? Or can we just decide, you know what, maybe we don't need that and we just don't hire any of them?
I guess the board could always do that, yes. You could interview and decide that that is not what you want. Those aren't the companies that you want to do the work with.
Or we find out something from insurance or somebody else that changes whether we need them or not.
I just do not want to waste time because once we have that information from the insurance, you still have to go through the RFQ process. You still have to have architects interviewed. And that, if we start that ball already rolling, we could change dates.
So we can do these RFQs, but still decide? That's not saying that we're going to end up hiring people, but just asking for bids.
We're asking for bids. And those bids would then give you the opportunity to bring those companies in and interview them and talk to them and meet them and understand their qualifications.
That doesn't mean we're going to end up needing those types of services. We're just asking for bids.
I like to segment this out of my mind, so tell me if I'm thinking about this correctly. The board will vote for an RFQ, request for qualifications. We'll probably have another opportunity to vote and choose that person. So that's two. And then we'll probably have another opportunity to set the scope and kind of see if that matches with our community and vote again. Plus it's, it's very successive, but you got to get the ball rolling now to be able to get to that scope of work that we'll eventually need. Am I thinking about that correctly, the way that rolls thing out, President? Okay.
Because eventually we should have more information back that we'll be able to share with them too.
Have the adjusters given you any kind of guess when they will put together? Here's what we're saying, here's what my engineer says, here's what we're, here's what the scope of your claim is starting to look like. Are they giving you any kind of information when that will come to you?
The structural engineer from the insurance company called me today and is coming tomorrow. So that person is just now going to be feet on ground tomorrow.
I'm not a structural engineer, but do you feel like he will be the one that we personally hired? I mean, can they walk through the building and make that, I mean, they give you their opinion basically in a day?
I don't know about that. So we have ours and then they will get together and come to an agreement. I don't, I don't know what that timeframe is.
Is ours already done, their assessment?
They've done some assessments, they've done walkthroughs. I haven't received anything right in front of me yet.
And I guess there isn't a one-person-fits-all situation for this. We need somebody to look at what we've got, tell us what's safe and how to fix what isn't. Is that person going to take care of, probably wouldn't take care of, seeing to the windows, God willing?
That actually is some of the work that our adjuster is doing for us. So they are walking through, they are looking at everything, they're working with estimators, and they will be going back and forth with the insurance adjuster on, this needs to be replaced, this needs to be fixed, all of those individual pieces, that work will go through them.
So the insurance adjuster is deciding what's... How may a, for example, a building's structure be set?
The insurance adjuster is going to be working with, for example, if there is a doorway that's, that's broken-out glass, and it potentially was blown open during the storm. So the insurance adjuster is going to go back and forth with our adjuster on which is the better. Is it going to cost more money to fix this? Or could it be a savings to just replace it? And so they're into those more finding back and forth of, of that work.
Okay. And they decide which way, but they don't actually oversee the replacement or the repair?
I think we have to decide what we're going to do with everything. And I think you need a, you need a professional engineer, architect, to say, here's what can be done, here are some options. Then on the other side of that, you have insurance saying, this is what's damaged, and this is what you're covered for. Then also, potentially, you have FEMA coming in. And I couldn't begin to tell you what that process is going to look like. I don't know if there's anybody in, well, there's one person here. So this is just much more complicated than us deciding to remodel the elementary school. I'm just asking the board to approve for us to begin this process. I'm not asking the board to commit to anything or spend any money. I'm asking the board to allow us to procure professional advisement to get that process started, while the district can also simultaneously be reaching out and engaging with our community to see what the community wants to do. Some of that will be difficult if we still have unanswered questions. But those questions, those answers are going to start coming in. I just don't want to waste any time.
Well, I wouldn't want to over-survey people.
Yeah, I want negative results. Then I'd rather delay the survey until we have more answers. But I agree with the survey. That way you don't over-survey.
I'm sure that you all have a lot of people with different ideas on what we should do, because the word goes wide. There's people from way over on this side to way over on that side. And those, all, all those people deserve to have a voice and to be considered in our decisions.
I agree, but any voice needs to have some sort of background.
Yeah, they just don't, until we know the decision.
I think some of those voices are coming from a picture on Facebook of a building that looks destroyed with no professionals saying, this building can easily be repaired and done back on its surface. We need to know that, what's the professionals' opinion of this building's structure?
Yes, they're going to toe out, and then that's a different story.
And that would be the RFQ for an engineer and...
So if I understand right, that window's broken, we've got the two insurance adjusters going back and forth on how to fix it. And then we would have an engineer, a third one into the discussion?
The engineer would be more about the overall project. Once we decide how we're going to fix things, what we're going to do. The engineer would be more about that higher level. Your adjusters are going back and forth during this claim process.
What can be done, the actual...
So is it safe to say the architecture engineer firm, we focus more on the high school, senior high maintenance area, and less on the school primary, elementary that aren't repairable?
Yes, that is very accurate.
President, I'd like to split these out. So I'll make a motion, I'm going to do them separately if you don't mind. I'd like to make a motion to send an offer, a request for qualifications for construction management service. And I'm okay with the draft that I see in front of me.
Okay, there's been a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So our motion passes for our construction management RFQ. So is there more discussion on about the architect and engineering services?
Will they be able to tell us, of course, they're engineers, but will they be able to actually tell us about their qualifications if they don't know the scope of the project?
Most of those interviews, you'll have like a list of interview questions that we'll go down through and ask them during that process. And we can, we can draft those questions ourselves, specifically to what, you know, their qualifications, what projects have they done? Have they done commercial work with other school districts? Or have they just built banks and a grocery store or so? It's more about finding that architect and engineer that is a good fit for schools.
Not just schools, but I mean, they need to know whether they can figure out if it can be repaired or replaced, and what best way to do that.
You know, they're, they're, it will probably have, you need to find out if they have, they're a large enough company to handle the workforce that would be involved. And so there's a lot of questions that would be in that interview process for you to decide if they were the right fit for the district. You know, you could even choose an architect that you felt was the most qualified out of that interview. And then that next process, then after you choose that person, would be to go back and forth to determine and negotiate the fees. If you do not come to an agreement on those, on the fees, you could go back then to the interview process and interview someone else.
Will any of this type of service be under the scope of the insurance?
Will any of it be?
Like if we hire an architect and engineering firm, will that be covered by the insurance claim? Most likely.
Most likely. Yeah, there's, there's going to be, there's the insurance claim, and then there is the potential for, for the FEMA assistance. You know, insurance, I, I've not ever dealt with a school being hit by a tornado. But we all have dealt with it individually, and a lot of times we think we're more well-covered than what we end up being. That could be our reality, I don't know that yet. Been told it looks like on paper, a policy looks like we have good coverage. I've been told that before. You know, so I, I've never been through this process. I'm definitely going to be learning a lot of, a lot of new things through this. And I just want to make sure, if I have not learned anything else in the, in these last 16 days, is that you cannot sit and wait for answers. They will come. The answers are going to come, not, not necessarily in the order that you want them. You'll get answers. But we all, we have to have already plans in place, or we're going to waste time for our kids. I'm going to have a building with a gaping hole in it for way longer than I should if I do not get the ball rolling. And I'm just asking you all to allow us to start this process. And then at any point, if you all feel uncomfortable with anything that we are doing, we can slow roll, we can stop, we can pull the board in for a work session, we can ask professionals to give us guidance. I am not, I said in the last board meeting, I'm an educator. But I'm smart enough of an educator to notice around myself the people who are smarter than me in areas that I'm not trained in. I want to do what's best for this district. I don't want to create a problem that's, that's going to hurt people 20 years from now.
As far as being, I understood uneasy with it, or unsure. Because that's, that's where I am right now.
Well, I don't want to grab our feet and obviously lose out on time. And so I, I think I can get behind the request for qualifications because we're not obligated to, we're not committing to anything other than to listen to what you can offer to help us rebuild. But I think we have to have some information from an insurance company or an engineer giving us some advice, giving us their plan or what they believe about our buildings before we can start going to the community and saying, what do you believe about? Because I, I mean, they'd be guessing. I mean, we need to know what, hey, this building can be repairable. We can put this wall back up, we can work this thing, we can clean it up, we can fix it. I hadn't understood that that's what the adjusters were doing already. And maybe I'm not using the right word, the right person here, inspecting the building to see what was structurally safe and what wasn't.
Okay, Mr. Kevin, can I add some input on there? I can only speak for residential, but if an insurance claims representative comes in and assesses the damage, and then they write you a check, and sometimes the homeowner just feels like, I got a check, now what? They feel like, I got a check, now what? But it truly is the customer or the insurance responsibility or their choice on who they get to choose to build back. Sometimes in residential, you can find more damage and go back and do a supplemental on that. And I can only assume that a construction manager might help us with the process if that's the same way with music. But I don't, I don't know, at least on a residential side, never going to tell a person they have to rebuild or how they should rebuild. Assess the damage, everything that you see, write a check. And then if you need to get something more finished, something else. Does that process seem to work the same way with the music process?
Still, by doing this RFQ, we would be getting someone in place to help handle that money and move us forward.
That's how I see it, we're kind of interviewing the refers and replacing them, except on a lot bigger scale.
Okay.
That's how I see it, but...
So the building's already been checked for its structural integrity?
There's been people looking at it, I have nothing in writing.
And the insurance guy hasn't been here? The insurance structural engineer?
No, he's coming tomorrow. I appreciate the analogy, that also helps me. I'm struggling to explain it as well.
Well, I would make a motion that we submit a request for qualifications for architect and engineering services as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
What would, what would you think of the timeline down here?
This, this timeline, or do you want my question?
I do have another question on the back.
Yes.
Dr. Jones, in my mind, the construction manager should come before the architect. Is there, what's your thought process on? I know it's only two days, but that one seems more urgent to me. Can you tell me your thought process on that?
Just not, I just, it's just, sounds tedious and I'm wasting time. I am just, I've got my foot on the pedal right now.
You could just relabel the two columns, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. But, and like I said, this is just tentative. Like, I know that there are a lot of dates here. We even, if the board would be willing to entertain creating some subcommittees amongst the board so that the board doesn't have all of this time commitment, I think that, that would not have to be decided tonight. That is something that could be just, you know, we could have a work session to work out this timeline and who's going to do what.
Well, I look at this timeline, we've already met the top one. The second one goes to the newspaper. I don't see many qualifications for me on this timeline. So I don't feel like that is a negative thing, right?
Now, when it gets...
There's only a couple of dates on there that really affects us. Because just getting in in the newspaper, giving them time to submit their stuff, and then we, you know, then we, then we start, but that's only two dates, correct?
You could be there for the public opening of the bids, but that wouldn't be a board meeting, I mean, that's, that's open to the public. So I think that's a good point.
It's obviously time, but I'm seeing an extravagant amount of time here.
No, if we have to change some of those dates, we can change some. I mean, if, my, my press right now is if I don't set goals and put a date on it. I mean, that's, that's what I have to work towards. And so, but that can change, and that's what I keep telling the admin team. If there's something that, if there's a hurdle that changes that, it does. But we still, we still...
I'd like to give a message to any parent or community member listening just because I have this in front of me and you don't. But this process, kids are going to be in school for three weeks before we even interview anyone. So my, my, when I first seen this on here, I was thinking to myself, man, we don't even have the kids in the building, we're talking about an architect, but when you slow down and look at it, we're not even interviewing anyone until the end of April. So just want to say that to anyone who's wondering.
I have one more question, just out of curiosity. When we're, we're not using any rooms in the high school next week, we're going to put kids in the old senior high, understanding middle school and elementary, is there going to be need for mobile classes that we talked about a little bit last week?
We think in the short term, we should be able to get by. It's six weeks, but we have, we have staff that are sharing spaces. So we haven't, there's a lot of options for us to look at, to consider that maybe for the long term, for the next school year. We can do it for the next six weeks with what we have. Our office is an example of that. We moved out of the old senior high into a very nice space, but it may not be available for long term for us. So there's nowhere for us to move back here, but we maybe could move into temporary. We are adults in office. It would probably be okay for us to be in a temporary facility compared to a classroom. But some, from what I understand, there are some temporary spaces that are very nice and conducive to classrooms. We just haven't had the full chance to explore all those opportunities because we have enough right now. We can do it, we've got space, let's roll, let's do it. But for the long term, that might be something we need to consider. We might need to consider it for what? For the staff that was in the old senior high. If we have to stay there with students when school starts, I would rather them have the building than us, we can go somewhere else.
Jones, I'll just make a comment you don't necessarily have to answer. But last board meeting, we talked about, I believe we call it pilot pride for teachers' opportunities. Do you foresee for a parent or a student that felt like... Do you foresee for a parent or a student that felt like they did get behind, do you see an opportunity, you don't have to answer this, but could you look into offering more tutoring opportunities? Are you already thinking about that? Is there, is that something we can consider? And I can leave it as a comment if you...
I can respond that we do already offer that. So I think that increasing that definitely could be a possibility.
Thank you for the, every update, every else. I have no idea what's going on.
I should be able to. My, my hope is that things slow down a little bit and my updates will be like it was last night. Maybe not every night, but definitely more often. And in an email that allows you to have specifics. So I'm hoping to get a little more time, once we get the kids all in and settled and staff in and everybody's good, to be able to communicate you all, with you all in that format. I would figure that would be much easier for you to be able to read that on your own. And the reason I was doing it, I was trying to take some of the weight off of her. And that's why I would call her in the evening and get the update and send it out to you. Not that I felt I was special and I was the only one that could do that. It's just, I was trying, I know her stress level was very high and in the evening, sometimes it was seven, eight o'clock before she was getting home. So I was trying to take some of that off of her. And in no way did I ever want you all to feel that I had left you out or anything. I was just trying to, to make that world a little easier for her. But I do think that now that she's able to do that, I, I think that will be a good thing. It helps me. If you all are okay with that format, just a little bits and points, that helped me kind of wrap up also. It was, it was good for me as well.
Any motion to adjourn? Hope to establish a per, adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? We are now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.